Well, guys, thank you for coming. I was told that the chairman of the POA thought that today they were going to hear it from the likes committee and they're going to be voted on on the 23rd, 25th, the next week, so they might vote on the next week. So evidently there was some communication from the likes committee.
What session come to order? Hope everybody has their phones turned off. I have my microphone on now. First order bid is an update on the assessment. Okay, so at this point this morning, we are at 53.7 percent. So we have a valid vote, meaning we're over the 50 percent form requirement. This compares on a day-to-day comparison, meaning the same number of days voted in the last vote that ended in November, that compares to 50.4. But there are fewer days in this vote, it's ending today, where on the last vote there were several more days. It's possible that we will go over 54 percent, I'm guessing at this point, by the time the vote is tabulated tonight, and that compares to 52.8 percent for the last vote. Just a reminder, the meeting is tonight at 6:00 PM at Riordan Hall. The Elections Committee will reveal the outcome of the vote. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, next update, Rules and Regulations Committee. If I can jump in, I think we have a number of guests here today regarding the wake vote issue. If you look at the bottom of the agenda, we included a note that the wake vote issue has been transferred to the Rules and Regulations Committee. Now, what the Rules and Regulations Committee does is they codify the recommendation. So the likes committee has given a recommendation to the board, that recommendation goes to the Rules and Regulations Committee. Codifying means they're actually going to write the policy, and they're going to look at how it's going to be written and the detail behind it. That meeting will take place on Saturday, January 25th, at 9:00 AM here in the boardroom. Assuming that they, that the Rules and Regulations Committee comes to an agreement, and if they make a recommendation, then it would be forwarded to the board, and then the board would consider it and vote on it at the regular meeting in February, which is the third Thursday in February at 9:00 AM here in the boardroom. Assuming the board wants to forward it further, then it would go to the regular meeting, which is the fourth Thursday in February at 6:00 PM here in this room, and that's when it would be voted upon to be approved. Don't forget that any policy changes require two votes of the board, so they would have to vote on it at the February meeting, and then they would have to vote out on it on the March meeting before it become, before it is enacted into official policy for the POA. So those, it's a little bit of a laborious process, but it's done so so that we have, you know, we do everything right, and everything is, is, all the information is appropriate, the wording of the, of the policy is correct and so forth. Any questions on that? Jerry, I think you were to give an update on the remainder of the things that were covered by the Rules and Elections Committee.
Yes, we had our last meeting, and we reviewed a number of policies during that period of time. It was a rather lengthy meeting, and I suspect that the 25th meeting would be also quite lengthy. The first thing is looking at the Rules and Elections Committee and the policies that go along with that. We could have some changes relatively minor, but there are changes to those policies, 1.02 and 1.035. It basically changing the word to policy, from policy to governing documents, so the Rules and Regulations covers all of the governing documents for the POA. Changing the same in Policy 1.035. And we also have recommended that the corporate secretary should print the policies, or the directors for their manuals, and as well as update the whip. Currently, it says the Rules and Elections will do that, but we really don't have the ability to, so the corporate secretary will be doing that. These will come before the, before the next work session. Okay, other policies that are concerned right now, especially with vote areas, if the vote passes, then we'll be making some changes to Policy 3.02, which is the ID card, basically we'll change that to activity card. Anyplace within the policies that refer to a photo ID will be changed to activity card. That includes 1303, the membership card. Probably will have something about 3.04 that's concerned, yes, that they're impacted somewhat. And then, the last item of importance is that the committee has recommended a resolution for the January regular board session meeting, which will be next week, to be created according to financial uptake to be given regarding the distribution of assessment increase money. What we're trying to do is codify all of this so that we end up with reports on a quarterly basis of exactly where the money from the assessment would place. Okay, our next meeting is January 25th, right here in this room at 9:00 AM. Are there any questions? I can read more detail in the packet.
Next item is the bridge at Burksdale, closest to the block called referred to as the number 18, Bridge. There's been additional damage to the bridge with the last rain event, to the point that we're quite concerned, trying to do something.
So we, we brought this to the attention of the board in December, and since then, there's been additional damage to this bridge. I'm going to have speak, I'm going to have Keith speaking just a moment, and I'm going to give you kind of a rudimentary drawing up top to kind of demonstrate where the damage is. But management is concerned, and we would like approval from the board to move forward immediately. Normally, at work session meetings, the board does not necessarily vote, but they do have the authority and power to do so. And we feel that, given the extreme nature of the situation, that we would like the board to give us authority immediately, because we want to make sure that we get the bridge removed as quickly as possible. A couple different things. Several months ago, when we had Craft and Tall Engineering come out to do a review of the bridge, they gave us three options: replacing the bridge, repairing the bridge, and removing the bridge. Based upon the damage that is in, that we have sustained so far, repairing the bridge is no longer an option. Okay, so it does only replace and remove, and if you're going to replace it, you're going to remove it anyways. So removing is, is necessary, and we are concerned that in the next possible storm that hits us, whenever that may occur, that the bridge could wind up in the stream, and we don't want that to happen. What we're requesting is approval from the board for expenditure of $75,600. We estimate that it will take as much as three months to remove the bridge, which with a large portion of that timeframe be taken up by permitting, so forth. So I'm going to turn it over to Keith, and while Keith is speaking, I'm going to give you a rudimentary drawing to give you a general idea, no comments on my artistic ability.
Okay, I don't have a lot to add to what Tom said. I did crawl around under that bridge yesterday, now that the water's down. The bridge is set up, like he's going to draw, longways with three sets of piers, crossways, five, five, and five. On the upstream side, or to the south side of that bridge, or I guess it would really be the west side, the three center piers no longer are supporting anything, they're then knocked out. Now, one of those piers that I saw yesterday, this happened after the last rain incident of Friday, pushed the, one of the center piers all the way up against a middle row pier, so it's forced up against that, so now anything that hits that, it's hitting directly on that middle pier. Again, when he gets the drawing up here, you'll have a little clearer explanation of it. The concern with that, the reason I think it's more imminent that we're going to have an issue with it, is because now, the next event, Tom's point, when debris comes down, we'll have a clearer path to start getting the second row of piers. And we can, we can see on the surface that it is settling on that upstream side. As a matter of fact, after this rain event, there are joints of the railing, and it already started to buckle a little bit. Now, there's a new chunk of concrete that's been popped out, which logically would tell you that it's pinching together as it settles and breaking the concrete. So it is moving at some level. To me, it's inevitable that it is going to come down, it's just a matter of when. So, the other thing I would point out, we have our irrigation right across there that we can isolate, can't isolate, so we can take it off. It will not affect us being able to irrigate either golf course. Burksdale 18 should be reopened, and Kingswood, because we have pump houses on each side. It was just a safety net, if you will, that if we lost one pump house, we'd transfer water. We would no longer be able to do that once the bridge is down. So we're ready for that part. The other thing is wastewater's sewer lines on that bridge, and we have talked to them several times, sent a letter, they were out yesterday investigating, and they started the process to try to bore underneath the creek and move their sewer line off our bridge, because we told them at some point that bridge will either be removed by us or by other methods. So that's where I'm at. So Tom, you could probably show them the picture I talked about.
So a reminder, no comments on my artistic ability. So here's the bridge, this is the land, this is the water, this is the flow of the water, the arrows indicate the flow of the water. These little dots are the piers that are supporting the bridge, so there is 15 piers supporting the bridge. And right now, those three are out of commission. And this pier is shoved up against that pier. So our concern is that the next rain that comes through is going to knock out this one, and we could have a bridge in the water if we don't get this out in a reasonable amount of time.
When I crawled under, this is where the old 18 was, so I crawled out here to look under so I could get a line of sight here. What I discovered is back in the, used to be in the bank, behind a rip raft, there's a set of three piers here that are now exposed as well, so that's right at the edge where that car pad joins the bridge. I didn't know those were there, you couldn't see them, but it's eating back underneath the raft, and these piers are now exposed. There's one here, one here, one here that were in the soil where you couldn't see them. Now you can see them. I'm assuming the same thing is on the other end, but I didn't see anything down there.
Any questions?
Yeah, may I ask this simple question? I have noticed on a number of our bridges that we are not doing proper maintenance and cleanup, which causes excessive stress on bridges. We collect tree trunks and debris at the base of the bridge, and it looks like it sits there for many months. Is anybody in charge of making sure that those things are cleaned up so that we don't knock other bridges out?
I will address that. We remove debris up against the bridge, we've done that on all the bridges. The only piece of debris right now that we haven't removed, we were just talking about a while ago, is on the bridge at Kingswood. There's a tree underneath there that we're working on getting out, but all the arch bridges don't have any debris under them, and we remove the debris as soon as we can get a piece of equipment in there safely. Right now, there's no debris up against any bridge that I'm aware of, other than 18 and that one that I'm talking about at Kingswood.
And so you're aware, we had equipment on that bridge removing debris when we found out that the initial pier was gone, and we got the equipment off that bridge. Getting it from the top is, is the quickest and most effective way to remove it, but now we can't put heavy equipment on that bridge, and that's when we lost one pier, now we're down three piers. Now, Keith was speaking with the contractor, and Keith, you jump in if I can just quote you in any way. We fully agree that the, that it's best to have a clear path, but now that we're down three piers, if anything, the contractor that Keith spoke with felt that in the very short term, that, that debris actually may help shield the other piers for right now. Because if it was a clear flow, and during the next storm, if we had a log hit that sent middle, the middle middle, in the right way, that could be a problem.
Right now, the debris is stacked in right here, water's away behind this side. There's a 36-inch diameter tree with a stump that's up against those piers right now, so it actually is shielding the piers from a direct hit. I'm not suggesting that that's, that's not the reason it's still there, we just have no way to get it out with our equipment.
Okay. I have a question. Question, go ahead. Did the Village Wastewater, again, the owner of the pipe, did they give an estimate on their time to remove it?
Village Waste, Village Wastewater was out there yesterday. They found their old line, it used to be under the creek, and they thought maybe that was just abandoned for convenience, so they checked it to see if it was usable, it was not. So today, they have their boring machine out there, they're attempting to put a bore to put a new line under the creek and get it off the bridge. If they hit rock, they will not be able to do it with their machine, and they would be required to get a contractor, which would delay the process. If they can get their machine to bore under there by the end of the week, or early next week, they should have their's free position.
So anywhere from one week to four weeks, it could probably have.
The long end, if they have to get an outside contractor, I have no real idea how long that would take.
And then you mentioned some erosion going on, and once the bridge is removed, can you speak to any further erosion, or can you do the rip raft, or what's the process there?
My guess is, once you see the contractor, the work they're going to do, they will address the edges where they take it out, and probably add to the rip raft that's on each side, would be my guess.
Okay, one point, that, point of information, Village Wastewater is not part of the POA, and it is not part of the city. So I know, I've encountered a little bit of confusion about that, out and about, so just make that point. So, any discussion about this?
Well, in reading the report here, Keith, you did, you had it in the report, but you didn't speak to the other bridges at Burksdale, the other two to the south that are not in use anymore.
Yes, those bridges are abandoned, they're, they're marked off. There is a little bit, to the gentleman's point back there, is a little bit of debris under the one that's now behind currently number two. It's not under the bridge, it's to the side, so the water's still going under it like it's supposed to. We may, if y'all, the board approves taking this down, get a contractor out, we may ask them while they're here, what additional cost it would be to take the one down behind two, the new two, because there may be some cost savings with that, and it may be worthwhile. The other one is, which is over further toward Harps, that bridge is not damaged necessarily, it just has the railings off, and that's why we have it blocked, there's no trees over it. That bridge also has a sewer product that we have not talked to them about, so if that bridge ever needs to come down, they will also have to address that issue there.
Is that also Village Wastewater?
Yes, all of that stuff is Village Wastewater.
Is there a sense we should just ask them to remove all of their pipes from our bridges?
We could do that.
Keith, is there any reason that we would want to keep that bridge over close to the maintenance facility, close to the barn?
It makes it a little more convenient to get across there to maintain, maintain that property, whatever's done in there. It may be of a benefit depending on what people decide to use, what we decide to use that for. It's not necessary to have to get onto the other side, because we have the arch bridges by the bathroom.
Maybe consideration, financial considerations, we just have to let that one sit for now.
It would add substantially to the cost, it's a pretty good-sized bridge.
And to Steve's point, you know, something that we can consider, we'll talk about it. Why do we want to ask Village Wastewater to get away from that too?
I do, I do agree with you, Steve. I think we could tell, and we'd like you to get it off of that bridge for future, even if we're not talking about taking it down, it's worth considering.
Well, is there, is there a sense then that once the pipes are more secure on bedrock and having, can we just abandon the bridges and let nature take its course? Is that a choice here?
Well, that's what, that's what we're doing right now, and that's probably not...
Years?
Yeah, for those, for the other two, quite possibly.
I mean, all of them?
18, the problem with 18 is I cannot get in there easily to get that debris off. And I just don't think we want that debris to continue to pack in there. In fact, I don't think it's a good idea that we just push it down the road, let the bridge fall in with the river, either. I'm not sure if it costs more or less to take it out, I can't answer that question, but I don't think it would be our best choice.
I don't think that DEQ, Artside Department of Finance, would want us to consciously abandon a bridge, knowing that it's probably in the near term going to go into the stream bed. That's, and this is a public meeting, with minutes taken, recordings, I think it is in a few ways best interest to have that bridge removed in a professional manner with all the necessary permits in place.
Okay, so I guess the question is not yet whether we want to remove the number 18 bridge, is do we want to include the one behind number two? Get a sense of that, Tom?
Well, we're going to know a lot more about our financial position tonight. We don't know what it looks like now. We definitely have a little bit of time in that we can, if they, the board wanted to add the additional bridge to save $20,000, so let me, let me talk about that. The estimate that we received from Craft and Tall said, Craft and Tall Engineering said that if we remove both of the abandoned bridges, that it would cost a total of $131,200, but we would save $20,000. So, but with the other bridge, it is not in as dire condition. We are not aware of any piers at this time that are, have been lost. They all look reasonably good, but keep in mind that both bridges were built at about the same time, and you can't see what's occurring under the water. So it is possible that the other bridge could, you know, the piers underneath the water could be undermined, and we don't know that. But to the best of our knowledge, that bridge is probably going to be stable, and could potentially be stable for years. $20,000 is a prerequisite in savings if you do both at the same time.
Well, for my money and our money, because it's going to be tied either way whether or not the assessment passes, I think we're able to just deal with the one on 18, leave the other one there, you know, because we need to make that decision today, I think, in order to get this thing going and sort of the process. And let's say on the long shot that the assessment does pass, we could go back to that contract, or have to attack, you know, in the next few weeks, even before it's even done. So we might be able to still save the $20,000, but I think for the day, the best thing is, there's a one over there behind number two, I've been over there and looked at it, and it doesn't look like, you said, you don't know whether it's going to fall or not. And in that case, I'd say, who cares, let's get this one out of the way before we get that problem.
I agree.
I believe you, board, just taking out the 18, King Bridge.
Now, is in the report, are you asking us, are you asking us to approve the demolition cost, or to give bids, or to give permits, or all of it?
We are asking the board to approve $75,600 for the management to move forward with the removal of the Burksdale Bridge and number 18. That's what we're specifically asking for.
Okay, so to suspend any bids there?
No, that's still on. No, what we would do is get the contractor to write up a report of what has to be done, these are the permits we have to have there in place to pay for that, and then go out for three bids as per our POA possible. So we have to have the engineers plan permitting in place, and then we can go out to bid to have everybody.
But I think, Jim, with your, I think you're jumping ahead, and I think that's really If we can't get multiple bids, because this is a very specific type of task, it is possible that we may not be able to get three bids, and we would prefer to not have to, you know, I think time is of the essence, and I would prefer not to have to come back to the board if we were only able to get two bids. So if, so I think that's what you're, maybe what you were hitting on, and I think that's wise, because I think we need to move forward with all, all speed, because I'd hate to be in a position where one week before the bridge was going to come down, we get the rainstorm that was going to the stream bed. The one other thing I would point out is, remember, in three months is when we get heavy rain, and so we want that break down.
One final thing I would point out about the bid, about the bid process, is by, there's $5,000 of the money you're approving to do the bidding, which is going out to bid, and the papers are doing all that, and Craft and Tall doing that, they have way more contacts with contractors than we would. So it's much more likely that they'll only get three bids by using that, is what I would say.
Did you have a question?
I do, can you hear me?
Yes.
I totally understand, I think I've got to take care of this right now. It's the position that we've just faced with, and I'm coming forward. I don't think that the result of the assessment in any way affects our decision. I don't think that the result of the assessment in any way affects our decision to move the bridge because we're not going to have money immediately if this passes. So I think the main point that needs to be discussed is can we move this forward, we need to get the bridge on, but we don't have any for it. I'm in support of moving that if we know that that is not going to be money borrowed from the water, that it's going to be something found from the budget and for what's the invoice from Craft and Tull to be done, so we can understand what is being planned on permit, what agent can, if it's been added or not, it's going to be moved forward.
So we're looking for more detail on the proposal to remove it for the seventy-five six, is what you're asking?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Tia, you were breaking up a little bit, we had a little trouble understanding. Were you asking that we get more detail on the proposal before we vote on it?
No, not at all, I believe in moving forward, but I do think that the board should be able to see invoice of the Craft and Tull committee statement, as well as, I want to ensure this is not money from the water department, this is meant to have to be found from our current budget.
Yeah, and if you recall in the December memo that was given to the board, it did include all the detail from Craft and Tull, the current package does not, but it was provided to the board. What Keith and I have talked about the financial portion of it and at this point, so we're at a little bit of fork in the road with regards to the assessment increase, but Keith has said that at least preliminarily, he's going to find the money in his operating budget. He's not really thrilled about that because the operating budget is extremely tight, but on the level of priority, this is very high. Now, if the assessment increase were to pass, the board is going to have to relook at what the budget looks like, is the board going to go with the past budget that was already developed, is, are the board going to go with a modification, something to that nature. So let's assume that the assessment does not get approved, then, which would be the worst case scenario, then Keith would find the seventy-five thousand, six hundred in his own budget. So we think that's pretty good, but recognize that you are going to see an impact on the quality, the golf course condition, it's, it's budget is already tight.
Thank you.
Question.
We're already maintaining the Burksdale more at a minimum level, or we still, how are we still maintaining it?
We are maintaining it at a minimum level, but there is additional savings if we decide that we're not going to reopen because we're still having to do the things like pre-emerge and take care of the greens that would save that money and that, if we're doing the bridge on eighteen Burksdale, eighteen Burksdale should be the budget, I would hope that we could find the money because I don't see why we want to pull down its cost or any of the other ones, but we'll do what we need to do to find that money.
That's kind of where I was going with that, it's, you know, we're not using that nine anyway, we might as well either go to the least, very least, I mean, no chemicals, we have to mow it once in a while, but we spend that money on chemicals, save that money and put it toward the demolition of that bridge. And sometime in the near future, we're going to have to make a decision whether or not we even consider opening that golf, that nine holes ever again.
What happens to us if tomorrow there's a massive rainfall on that bridge collapse?
We will probably be on the phone with the Department of Environmental Quality that same day and we will be bringing in engineers and contractors to get the bridge removed. But it's, it's in our best interest to, for us to remove the bridge and not for nature.
Because?
Because we're going to end up doing it anyway, Murray. One way or- We also think it's going to cost more to remove it from the stream. I mean, that's a hard estimate to, you know, go to a contractor and say, okay, how much is it going to cost to remove the bridge now and how much is it going to cost if it's in the stream bed?
Are there any fines that might be imposed if it's in the story bed?
What was the question?
Bridge collapses.
Well, what I would say in my experience with agencies in the past is that if you have a natural emergency and then knock something down, they're going to let you start doing the cleanup and then you're going to still have to get the permit, but they are not going to make you wait while you do that. Now, since it's not in the creek, they'd like to go through the process would be my guess.
How many of our pier bridges carry wastewater pipes or anything?
Two.
Both on Burksdale.
Okay, so there aren't any others that we have to be thinking about telling them?
And that's what Steve was talking about a few minutes ago, is, is the board taking into consideration of going back to wastewater and asking them to remove all.
On both of them?
On both of them. At least on the other one, it would be, they would have more time, you know, we could give them a little more time, where this one, we're, we're really pushing them as much as possible to get it off.
I just didn't know if there were other bridges on other courses that might have the same.
Well, there are four bridges on Burksdale that have piers. Only two have wastewater.
Okay, I'm talking about other courses.
Uh, no. Are there any arch bridges with wastewater on them?
I do not believe there is because they don't go across that arch bridge. Oh, they might be on the arch bridge eighteen Kingswood maybe, I'm not sure. I'd have to check it out.
Okay, what kind of motion do we need to give this in? I would recommend, I recommend a motion to give management the authority to move forward with the removal of the bridge at Burksdale eighteen at an estimated cost of seventy-five thousand, six hundred. We, the board would like management to get three bids if that is possible, but given the situation, we will relax that policy if necessary. If necessary. Okay, Stephen?
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize management to remove the number eighteen Burksdale Bridge by using seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars out of the operating budget, with the understanding that the three bid requirement may be waived at management discretion.
Motion. Second. We have a second, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I didn't think so. I have Ruth's proxy. We'll vote at this time, all in favor proceeding. I don't see any dissent, we're going forward. I appreciate that. Okay. Open forum is next. Anybody want to address the board at this time? Your name and the street that you live on.
Ellen Creek Club, fifty Churchill Drive. Sorry. You were to hear from the Lakes Committee today, was my understanding, I've communicated with Ruth Hatchery three times and so that's why we are here representing the residents of Lake Windsor. All rise. So this has just represented this and many of us have been to the Lakes Committee meetings several times over the past two and a half, three years. We have shared videos, ideas, suggestions, solutions and complaints. The first solution was that to add more lake rangers, which did provide education to voters and did collect many more fees for the POA, but it did not address how big, how powerful and how, it's too big for Lake Windsor. The Lakes Committee recommendations still do nothing, the current ones that you did not hear today, they were here, they left. I'm a little angry at that, but the current ones that you're going to hear do not address the problem and they don't get out ahead of the safety issues. In fact, we have been told as residents that we should go to a no wake lake in order to paddleboard or kayak because the wake boats need the lake and that's not acceptable. We spent lots of money repairing our seawalls. The residents of Lake Windsor would like this board to send the Lakes Committee back to the table, not to the Rules and Rigs Committee, but back to their table and end their interim until a final resolution is acceptable to oppose a moratorium on registration of any more wake boats or boats that create ballast to make a larger wake. The two hundred feet is inadequate and an interim step would be to require them to be in the middle of the lake as much as possible. If you don't know what a wake boat is, you better go Google it and while you're at it, Google jet boat. Problems associated with wake boats, safety, nuisance, shore erosion, et cetera, have been vigorously debated in lakefront and riverfront properties across the communities and across the nation. As these are becoming more popular and showing up on water waves that are too small for their safe operation. So a more thorough review of what's going on across the nation needs to be done by the Lakes Committee, so they need to go back now. The Lakes Committee should also be charged with deciding what drives, horsepower, dimensions, capability, speed, numbers of boats that are too much for Lake Windsor to handle, including the bass boats. POA Council has told us that there can be no grandfathering and there are no limits being set. So someone could bring their bass boat up from down on the Gulf Coast, put it on Lake Windsor and there are no rules to prevent this. Once a boat is registered, the owner can, can't be told that they can't use it, they can't be grandfathered and so other people can bring bigger, faster boats and put it on our lake. The rules need to allow the grandfathering and to set limits. Currently, nothing is being done, as we aren't doing either. Now, we don't want it to be a no wake lake, that's not what we want, but limits need to be set as the boating industry continues to build bigger, faster boats and make bigger waves. Thank you. Questions?
I'm Don Wining.
Any questions?
Sorry.
Was there a question?
Just an observation, if we take your recommendation and move it back to the Lakes Committee, more than likely, we're not going to have any kind of vote enacted before the season begins with the larger boats.
Well, in the last, the last Lakes Committee, it was my understanding, they pushed that through so they could get it to this meeting. And now it's been pushed to February anyway, so I don't know, I don't know what really matters because it's already been pushed out, it looks like it's going to be February or March and that's almost too late. So I, I don't know, I'd, we'd rather have a good outcome than, and maybe this is another step, but then it's another year.
Well, I'm not in favor of moving it back to the Lakes Committee. However, if the board decides to do that, we're going to be into July or August before we have any kind of regulation. But that's a given fact.
Well, what they're proposing now isn't going to do much, anybody else having thoughts?
What, let me, let me echo what Jerry's saying, is if it goes in the current process, which is going to the Rules and Rigs Committee and then back to the board in February and a second vote in March, this is all a sum, assuming, you know, it's ultimately the board's decision, then the policy would be enacted before the season starts. But as Jerry points out, if we kick it back to the Lakes Committee, it could take one or two months and then we're talking, then we're into the season and it's going to be challenging to enact anything. So just want you to be aware of the timeframe that we're sitting with right now.
Just an observation from sitting on the Lakes Committee, it appears that this may be a true compromise because neither side is happy. And I don't think it's possible that people in favor of wake boats, people opposed to wake boats are ever going to agree. We're trying to go down the middle and help the owners of the wake boats realize their responsibility to their neighbors and when it boils down in the end, we can't make people be nice. But we, we can encourage them, some of the steps in here to make identification of wake boats easier, which when you take away people's anonymity, they tend to be hey, a little better. So it's a step and it's not perfect.
David Fike, I'm Don Wining, I'm going to make your call. Understanding that the Lakes Committee has had a very difficult task, we do appreciate your effort, however, given the amount of input that was provided by you, by over fifty Lake Windsor residents to your committee in writing and in testimony and in video evidence, we felt, we feel like we were in court. Moving the limit out fifty feet to two hundred feet, which is essentially about sixty some yards, if you play golf, that's a sandwich, it's not very far up, it's not adequate. I personally provided you with the video of a wake boat moving down more or less the center of the lake in Lake Windsor. The wave that reached the shore, which you saw, crashed into the seawall, up and over the seawall, up to my dockboards, feet, several feet high. Anybody on that dock have been drenched? As an interim step, and I agree, I don't think you should go back to your committee, it should go to this board, this board should make this decision and quick as possible. If you can't do it now and you need more evidence, then do more tests, make sure the tests that are done are done objectively, make sure that all the people involved in this test are honest brokers with no vested interest in the outcome. Make sure that the evidence includes the size of the wave generated behind the boat, which we saw nothing of from the last tests that were done. If the test results were, came out with nine inch waves, crack gently lapping against the shore, there would never have been any, nobody would have ever complained about the wake boats. Those were not representative waves that were generated in the test. We have evidence otherwise proving that they are very dangerous, a child playing in the water, those waves coming in would be hurt if slammed against the seawall or rocks. We have evidence presented to you by testimony from one of our people here today, Terry Wilson. He was personally injured by a wake boat wave at his dock. Again, you receive a lot of input, this is happening all across the country, but like in Missouri, in Virginia and in Oregon, all across the country, they're dealing with this issue of wake boats producing too large waves the size of bodies of water in which they're operating. They will let River Valley Authority just move the limit for the wake boats on that body of water out to three hundred feet. Again, if you're going to do something as an interim step, move to our wake boats, not to the middle of the lake, as far away from the shore as possible. They only move about ten to twelve miles an hour, they don't need a lot of room to turn around at the end of their run, so why not move them out? That's, it has some common sense solutions to this. Again, we feel like, okay, we feel like we are ignoring, please don't ignore us again.
And just in answer to your question, we, we want a moratorium, so we don't want any more out there until something has changed and so that we don't keep adding.
Errol Lawson, ninety-seven Mayfair, I live on Lake Windsor. I think it's, I'm not sure going back to the Lake Committee is going to accomplish anything, they've had this on their- They've had this on their table for over two years and it's, we've ended up with what we've got, which is really, you call it middle of the road, we call it wake boat owners won. All you did was move it out 50 foot. I think it's clear that probably the Lake Committee and probably this board will never outlaw wake boats because you've got issues with the people that have got them and are there. But I think it's important that we look at setting a limit. We've gotta stop the growth of them. The people that are, we can't grandfather them, the attorney says, but let's set a limit. Find out how many there are, take that number, add one or two to it, but set a limit that that's enough for Bella Vista. Because if we don't, the number's gonna keep growing and the safety issues are just gonna get worse and the exposure's gonna get bigger. If there's really an injury or a major accident, the Lake Committee, the POA Board is gonna have some liability because it's been on the table so long and it's in the minutes, it'll be another lawsuit if we don't watch out for it. And the only way to reduce exposure is set a limit. You can't ban them because you probably won't, but set a limit on how many there are.
Okay.
JB Fortel, 03 Kirk Circle, and this is a little bit of a wider note that I wanted to thank you for something. The decision to keep Wake Point open with a limited venue and during the interim until the events is wonderful and I understand it's very successful, you're making money and you're keeping all of us that live very close there, a nice place to be together. Thanks.
And that idea came from a proper area. Okay, seeing no further business, the announcement is on. Special meeting tonight with the election results at Meriden Hall, 6:00 PM. The Board of Directors' Regular Session next Thursday, January 23rd at 6:00 PM, right here in this room. Rules and Regulations Committee Meeting, Saturday, January 25th, 9:00 AM, in this room. The Board of Directors' GM Meeting, February 13th, 4:30, in this room, because it's a closed meeting. Coffee and questions Tuesday, December 10th? Oops, February 10th. We'll go with February 10th, that must matter. Highlands Clubhouse, Board of Directors' Work Session, 9:00 AM, February 20th, in this room. Board of Directors' Regular February Session, February 27th, 6:00 PM, in this boardroom. That being said, I hear a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Adjourn.